Hey, que pasa, Calexico? Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, before we begin, I want to thank my friends here at Calexico Brewing Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really appreciate it. Today, we have a guest who's running for El Centro City Council. This is the second time running for City Council. My guest today is Mesonia Carter. Thank you for being here today.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So before we get into, you know, campaigning, you know, like I said, this is your second time around. Tell us a little bit about who you are. You know, we were talking a little bit before we started recording. You mentioned your dad was a bulldog. He grew up here in Calexico before he went off to the military. But tell us a little bit about who you are and, you know, some of the things that you've done here in Imperial Valley.
Well, first of all, I worked for the school district. I worked for El Centro School District. And that's where a lot of my tendency to want to work more for the public came from. You work with children and then you get to know their parents and then you get to know that they have needs and they have wants and people are not listening. Well, I'm listening. So that's one of the things I said, okay, well, this is for me. This is why I need to go out and serve our public. And I'm a single mother of one. I helped raise, I don't know how many kids, a whole lot of them, but I have one daughter. And my nieces and nephews, they're all from here. I have two sisters. Both of them are here. Well, they live in El Centro. And my parents, both of them have gone to glory, but amazing people that I was raised by. I really have to give it to them for the foundation, for the structure, for them molding me into the woman that I am today. First and foremost, God has that all, that glory. And then, second, I have to give it to my parents. My dad, he was, he started off as a, in the service and then he went to the Green Beret frontline. And it was funny because when he was, this really stands strong to me because when he was a Green Beret frontline, we got to meet one of the people that he rescued. And he would, he called him Rev. He became a pastor. And he would always sit up there and he would tell us, your dad was a hero. He actually would go and crawl and get people, put them on their back, take them back to safety. And then he would put them there and then go get somebody else and crawl out there, go get somebody else, bring them back to safety. And when I think of that, it's like, wow, wow, we have an opportunity to help people. And that's what our goal needs to be in life. And then my mom being an educator and then my dad ended up being an educator as well. And my mom being an educator, she always taught and she taught first and second grade. Her motto was just loving people. She loved everybody. She helped everybody. She took care of everybody. When I say inspiration, she is and always will be an inspiration to me. And then my grandparents as well. They were in the education field. On my dad's side, they were farmers, but then my grandpa was a pastor. And on my mom's side, both of them were in education as well. My grandma was a secretary at Washington School for forty-eight and a half years. So it's just kids and families and the community. So me being in the school district for twenty-four years, I said, okay, what better yet to do with myself than to serve and help other people? So here I am.
I mentioned that you ran, you know, your first campaign in 2020 and it was during a pandemic. You mentioned that it was everything through Zoom. You couldn't really walk. And, you know, it was, you said it was five candidates last time you came in fourth?
Yes.
When you look back at that, at the 2020 elections, you know, what are some of the things that you, you learned and that you're applying to this time around in your campaign?
Everything's a growth mindset. In between these two years of me running last time and this time, I had to step about better. I said, what can I do that was different than before? Well, I had to just, it was just a growth mindset. It was about what do the people want? It's not about me. It's not about what I want or what I see that needs to be done. So what I have done this time compared to last time is I've been out talking to the community. And I've been out talking to everybody I can think of in the community because you don't know what somebody's thinking and how they feel unless you sit down and have a conversation with them. And I have learned so much about our public, so much about our community, the people, they actually want to be heard. They want their voice to be heard. And it's time for change. It's time for change. And it's time that I speak up and I stand there for our people because in 2020, I was stepping in. You didn't know anything about campaigning, but knowing that I needed to be there for the people. Well, this time I'm coming in with a whole lot of more knowledge and I'm coming in and I'm ready and I'm on fire to serve for the people. So it's just a different, it's just a mind, a growth mindset. So now I'm at a whole nother level and it's all about the community. And I've proven myself by being out there, talking to people, understanding them and what they need and what they want and their desires. And it's interesting.
Yeah. And we mentioned that, you know, it was all through Zoom. You know, this is my first time meeting you. But, you know, I can, I have the sense where like you really like to be out there and really talking to people, meeting new people. You know, I bet it's night and day, you know, having to do everything through Zoom to like being able to be out there and talking to to all of your constituents and people from El Centro and, you know, and I think it's, it's, it's not only you that went through that. There's a lot of candidates that are running again this time around that are going through those, those changes. But I think it's a positive change.
It's a very positive change because two years ago, we could not communicate with the public at all. Everything was through Zooms. All of our communication with everybody, our forms. That was miserable because it's like you want to, people to see, it was just different this time around when we had our form. We actually had that in public and that was nice because two years ago, we had it through Zoom. Through Zoom, it was okay. I mean, because that's what we had to do at that time. But the pandemic taught us all a lot that we better be grateful for what we have. We better be grateful that we're able to come outside and communicate with people. So this time around, it was kind of different, but two years ago, it was a challenge. Everything was through Zoom, everything. We did, we were able to go door to door, but it was a different, you had to go and just put the, the door hanger on the door. You had to at least wear gloves. You always had sanitizer. I mean, which is not that much different now. I think more so now we're just kind of used to the way things are rolling. But two years ago, it was, it was really scary for everybody. And, you know, nobody wanted to come outside and talk to you. Nobody wanted you knocking on their doors and we knew better. So it was just about putting your door hangers and then moving fast. But now you can actually socialize with people and they get to talk to you and they get to ask questions and they get to know you. And when they get to know you, they say, oh, I'm gonna vote for you because I see what you want and what you need. We didn't get that two years ago. They got to read about us and that was it.
Yeah. And, you know, you learn a lot from people, just, you know, from talking, you know, body language. You know, it's, it's a different, you know, meeting somebody through a screen is, is not the same as meeting somebody in person. Because a lot of times when you're in Zoom, you know, you're looking at your screen and then your camera might be a little bit, so like you, you don't feel like you're having that, that connection.
Connection at all. And not only did I do Zoom two years ago for campaigning, I did it for work as well, just briefly. Because I do technology, so I had to be at work onsite most of the time during the pandemic. Because if kids needed, something was wrong with their Chromebook, they had to switch out their Chromebook. They needed new headphones. I was that person. So my time at home was brief, but that time that I was at home doing distant learning, wow. It was like, hello, you couldn't get to keep the kids' attention. It was like, hello, do you hear me? Do you see me? Very different atmosphere.
Yeah. And so I work in technology for the Calexico School District.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm in IT.
Okay. That's good. Well, my title is a computer lab supervisor, but I really think that that's outdated. Now we're running the Pisco Lab, which is a science lab. But before this, we were, we were the hands-on with technology. Who had problems with their Chromebooks, who needed headphones, who needed a mouse, who needed this? If something was wrong with their Chromebook, we would trouble track it. We would, you know, it was a lot that we had to do, but now we're in a lab. So things have changed tremendously amongst, you know, my job title, but it's okay because we get to learn a lot. And like I said, it's about mind growth set and that's where I'm at because I'm growing in every area.
Yeah. And we were talking about, you know, the pandemic before we started, you know, recording as well and how it, you know, at least for me, and you mentioned it that, you know, you notice that too. Where, you know, even though we all love our cities, you know, we're a part of the Imperial Valley. And, and, you know, you, you mentioned that being a good neighbor is something that you would like to, to focus if you run, if you win this, this, in November. Can you tell us a little bit about, you know, your, your thoughts and, you know, having a good relationship with, with every city here in Imperial Valley?
Oh, of course. I really think that being born and raised in El Centro, you actually knew people from every other city. And I'm just a strong believer that we need to stay connected, our neighbors and I, that's when I'm speaking. Because I feel like we're stronger together and I'm not just speaking of El Centro, which that's where I will be leading at. And that's where my thoughts and my head would be is focused on what's going on with El Centro. But our neighbors do matter and we do need to reach out to Calexico and Hopeville and Heber and Imperial and Sealy and Brawley and Calapan. And I know the people. So why not stay connected? So that way we can say, as neighbors, it's just like when you have your neighbor. When my neighbor goes out of town, they say, okay, can you watch my house? Of course. That's the same thing with us. We need to learn how to watch each other's towns and, and help each other. And that, I have seen that in the past because we have a wonderful council. I have to give it to them. Our city council, they, they do reach out. They do care about the people. So I'm just happy that I will soon be on board with them because we have ten days left to elections. So, but reaching out to the neighbors is something that I do want to push.
And I think that, you know, the city of El Centro really showed that during the pandemic when, you know, they gave us a lending hand when, you know, RPD, which, which is already shorthanded and which was shorthanded back then.
Yes.
You know, we had a little COVID spread in the PD. And I remember this, El Centro PD came down and, and patrolled our city for a couple of days. You know, which was, in the beginning was a little bit weird, like seeing an El Centro PD car in Calexico. But when you, when you hear the backstory, it was like really, really inspiring to see that, you know, we could, we could reach out to our neighbors and they would lend a helping hand.
And I'm very thankful for that because ECPD, they're all about safety. They're all about watching out for people and that's a, I'm about facts. And if you can prove your facts about what you want to do and they prove that they will help their neighbors. And that's very important because when you were in need, your city was in need, El Centro was there. And it would be vice versa. I do believe like if any other city is in need, we're gonna always be there. But safety does matter and I, and I'm very proud of our El Centro Police Department.
You mentioned the, the current city council. This coming election, there's two spots, there's four people. One of them, we really haven't heard anything from.
No, we haven't seen her.
Yeah. So we, yeah, because I've asked a couple of other candidates are like, well, it's four of us, but in reality, it's three of us. So there's two spots for four people, quote unquote. The, the, the three people that would be staying in the council. How do you see, if you're able to win that spot, how do you see yourself, you know, coming into that group and making sure that, you know, that's, that relationship is strong? We have, you guys have a strong council. How do you, how do you see yourself fitting into that?
Communication. That's the strongest thing we can ever look at. Regardless if we all see eye to eye, it's about communication. Because in the end, when we end up communicating, all it's gonna do is be better and for the people. It's not about us. It's about the people. So we're just gonna have to be grownups after our age and worry about how we can do, what we can do and how we can do it for the people. But the council, they're pretty good now. So, and then I seen through the form, we stood really strong with each other. All of us may have had different ideas, but Tomas and I, we, we basically had some of the same ideas of where we want to lead our people. Because it's about looking at all levels. We have a high level, we have a medium level and we have a low level of people. And these are just facts. So if you're going to go and talk to your people, it's not gonna just be one area. And that's what I explained before. And that's what I see as far as our council. Because this is something that I feel strong with. You gotta go out and you gotta look at the businesses. You gotta look at the homeless. You gotta look at our safety. You have to look at the economics of where our city is and where we're gonna take it to. So it's a lot of things that you need to look at. And I have binders. I have books of information that I've just been putting into things of, reading through them. And it's about knowledge is power. And you take that knowledge to the council and there's no way that all of you can't get along. Because you're gonna have to make some decisions and those decisions are gonna be made strong for the community.
Yeah. And, you know, being in, in a council, a lot of the times, you know, it's said that, oh, you're just one vote. You know, it's hard to really push or, or, you know, make promises to, you know. I don't know if you've made any, because I think that's something that I tell a lot of the candidates, you know, you shouldn't be making any promises because.
Those are called dry promises. I can't promise you anything, but what I will tell you is I will try my hardest and I'm going to push. And I'm going to communicate and I'm gonna listen to you. But promises we can't make because we really don't know what tomorrow holds. So we just need to push forward with what we have today. And that's just me listening and being there for the community and pushing what they want. So I will take it to the table. That's something that I have said to them. I will take it to the table. But there's no I in team. There's five people that sit on that council and everything is a decision-making. So that's why we need to make sure we vote the right people in.
Yeah. And, you know, something that I want to mention is that, you know, the bureaucracy of, you know, government. You know, there's, you know, federal, city or state, whatever, you know, a lot of the times people get frustrated because they want you to get something done, but in the other day, you know, there's, it's a process.
It's a process. That's exactly.
Yeah. And sometimes it's hard to communicate that to the people. How do you make sure that, you know, the, your constituents don't get frustrated by, you know, the slowness of bureaucracy? Or, or making sure that, you know, they know that you're, you're pushing or you're, you're still there for them, even though that things are a little bit slow?
Something that I haven't seen in the past is something that I want to do. And that's to have meetings consistently, talking to the neighbors, talking to the business owners, talking to the, to our community, to our public. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen consistent meetings. I feel like if you communicate with the, the community, that opens a whole lot of doors to where they will understand why this cannot be touched or why this is taking so long and why it's a process with this and where the funds are coming from for this. And you have to have another meeting to have it approved. And if you don't communicate with them, they don't know. So one of my biggest things is just to have meetings, communicate with the city, with the city, see what they want. And see, let them know where we're at and what's coming next. It's all about communication.
Yeah. And it's, it's something that I, I've been noticing, especially here in, in Calexico where and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I really try not to be point fingers or name names or, but I feel because I work for the district, you know, I kind of deal more with, you know, school boards. So like something that I noticed lately, well, not lately, but every election, every election season is, you know, these people, these, these candidates or people running for reelection where when it comes time for reelection or for, or election season, they're always on social media posting all these things that they've supposedly accomplished. And yet, once they're voted in, you know, you don't see them. They don't tell us anything. You try to reach out to them to get any answers. And the only time you see them around is when there's time for a picture or trying to scold you for something.
Yes.
So yeah, I think communication is, is really important. It really makes, it, it, it makes the citizens or constituents see, you know, that you're really working hard for them.
And I want people to feel comfortable with me. I want them to understand that I'm here for them and they're gonna see that. And anybody who knows me and knows my character, they already know. Because I haven't, this will be my first term getting in a seat once I went. So prior to this, they, they see me out working in the community, out volunteering, out helping people, out feeding the homeless, out taking. I mean, we work really hard with the church, with the community, with my family. We, my family and I, we go out and we help people. And just serving people is something that we have done all of our lives. So this is nothing new to me. So with me being in a seat, the only thing that's gonna open a door for is the communication with the community. Because this is something that they need.
Yeah. Sometimes I feel that, and not, not every time or with every people that, that runs. But a lot of the times, the people that are already serving in our community that aren't, you know, in the council or the county board or ID, they're already serving our community, helping the community. But once they, they go into, you know, elected office, it gets harder for them to serve. Because they're dealing with, you know, the, you know, the work that comes with being a city council member or, or.
Just life. Yeah, just life.
Do you feel that, you know, right now, you're, you could be, it's gonna help you more being in a city council to serve the community than it would be, you know, doing the things you're doing, you know, on your own?
I absolutely do believe so. I feel like I've worked and I've worked and I've worked. I feel like behind a closed curtain, that's what I've been doing all this time. The curtain's been closed all this time and I've been helping people, serving people, working for people, doing and doing and doing and doing. Well, now the curtain is open. And so I feel like it's gonna give me a whole nother way of being able to help the community. Because once you're able to make decisions, that makes a whole lot of difference. Because you can sit up there and talk all day, but action is what speaks. So if you don't, if you can't put forth that action because you don't have that push where you can put it and being on city council is just gonna give me that push. Because now everything that I've been doing before, helping people, now I can take it to the table. And now we can make decisions off of it. Because there's nothing better to me than knowing the community. And I stand shoulder to shoulder with everybody. I don't think I'm better than anybody and I don't think anybody's better than me. My parents did not raise us like that and there's no way you better ever think that. That's what I tell my daughter all the time. I say, when I become a billionaire, we still gonna use coupons.
That's a good one.
So it's just about life, you know, and I understand people. I love people and they love me. So I'm just gonna keep pushing for them.
And that's something, you know, and I ask that because, you know, I've thought of running for city council. One of the biggest reasons why I haven't done it is because, you know, I have a son that's fourteen, turned fourteen on Thursday. He's involved in school. He's ASB president. So, so we, you know, me and my wife are, he has basketball. He has all these things. So, you know, my wife works as well. So, you know, I get home first. So I take over that little time when she's not there and then I'll take him practice. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a team, right?
It's a teamwork.
So right now, you know, I know it's not, it's not a good time for me to step away and, you know, leave all the, all the work done on my wife. Because, you know, if I do run it, I want to give a hundred and ten percent.
That's it.
But at the same time, I feel, you know, doing this, you know, making sure that I talk to the candidates, making sure that the community, you know, gets to know, you know, the candidates. I don't know if it's, if it'll, if I'm doing a better service to the community by doing this or for, you know, being in, in, in council. So that's why I ask people like, why, why do you feel like, especially people that are already involved in the community? That are already doing things for the community. Because sometimes I feel like being in, in the city council, you know, it's gonna take time away from you. Sometimes you won't be able, because of your, might be conflict of interest or stuff like that, you can't do the same things you were doing before. And, and yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's a hard decision to, to, to make.
It's a very hard decision. And I really, before, before my parents passed away, we helped a lot with taking care of them and taking care of my nieces and nephews and helping out just with family. And being a single mother, that's one of the things I emphasize too. Because being raised in a two-parent home and then being a single mother, wow. Wow, I had the best of both worlds. I can speak to people because I've lived it. I've lived it. And that, you know, and another thing that I always say too is, you know, people that, I hear people, especially working with kids. You know, you can hear the little, little mean talk, you know, they calling people fat and they calling people. And I tell people all the time though, if you haven't ever been big, don't speak on it. Because I had the guy should bypass that. So I lost two hundred and something pounds. So I know the both worlds of that as well. So that's what I tell people. It's like, I've seen a lot. I know a lot. And I've been through a lot. And for that, I think it's, I'm in my season now for that reason. I really think that, that's why I went through everything that I went through, seeing everything. And now that my daughter's grown and it's, you know, her and I, I, you know, I have my sisters and we have our family, but everybody's grown. Everybody's living their life. So now it's my time. It's my time to help serve people. It's time for me to take what I have learned, all the knowledge, all of the, the buildup, everything that I know and take it and help the community. Because I understand. I definitely understand.
Hey guys, sorry for the interruption, but I want to take this time and thank my sponsors. I want to thank my friends Camilo, Jake, Eric Ortega. I want to thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative. Ms. Norma Sierra Galindo, IID Director, representing Division Five and serving the entire Imperial Valley. Will Torres from Valley Sports Network, your Imperial Valley source for sports. I want to thank Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs. With eight years of experience serving the Imperial San Diego Yama Counties with Mexican-style hot dogs and taquitas. Contact Sergio at seven six zero five six two zero zero fifty-seven or look for Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I want to thank David Gastelum. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in the Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor, but an investor with over twenty years of experience. And he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Contact David at seven six zero two three five nine five seven six or look for David Gastelum on Facebook. All right, guys. We're now back to the show. You keep mentioning, you know, when I'm, you know, you're, you're really confident that.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna win this one.
Yeah, because life and death is in the power of your tongue. You gonna speak it and you gonna get it. And that's just, you know, like I said, that's the way I was raised too. And I feel like if you don't speak confident over yourself and you say, okay, well, when, or if, or not, that, that right there. And see with me working with kids, I stop them all the time. This is me teaching them how to speak positive about what they're doing. So how can I belittle myself and not speak positive and I'm trying to teach somebody else to be positive? So I have to really watch what I say and how I do things. So I know that they're watching. I know that they see me because they talk to me all the time. So I have to be that example for people and I have to stand strong. So if I don't get it, at least they know that I tried. At least they know that I stood confident. At least they know that I was in it to win it and I stood my ground all the way until November eighth at eight o'clock PM. I'm pushing and I'm gonna give it my all. And that's what I tell them. Regardless if you, you rise or you fall, give it your all.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's something that I've, you know, our conversation, you know, you already see yourself.
Yeah, pretty much in there. Yeah. I, I, I feel like people tell me all the time too, you don't look like a politic or you don't act like a polit. No, because I'm a warrior and I'm on an assignment. And I feel like I'm doing this because I'm going to school right now to get my masters as well. And I made the decision, when I made the decision, I said, okay, I had to really have a talk with myself. Is this something that I want to do now? Because with me working, with me going to school, with me just living life and at the time I was grieving really hard and I was like, is this something that I really want to do? I had to push and it's something that I have to accomplish. So I feel like I'm not headed in this direction because I'm about jokes or I have something to play with. I'm headed in this direction because I'm a warrior and I'm standing strong for people. And I'm going to be an example for people and I'm going to help people. And I feel like I'm pushed this way for a reason. It's not about me. Because I tell people all the time, I would love to be sitting at home watching Lifetime. Okay, you know, but it's not about me. It's about the community. It's about the people. And when I say it's about the people, I'm, I go and I talk to the senior citizens. I talk to the elderly. I talk to the children. I talk to the middle age. I don't care what nationality you are. We had all kinds of nationalities go through our household. Our parents had a revolving door. Everybody was welcome. Anybody was welcome. We did everything that we could do to help people. So I feel like this is my time. This is my season. And this is what I'm built for. And I'm going to accomplish it.
Yeah. I, I think that, you know, the way, sometimes like when, when you say, you know, people say like, you know, if you put it in the universe, it'll, it'll, it'll happen. it'll, it'll happen, right?
That's it. You gotta speak it.
Yeah, exactly. How do you, 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 you know, there, like you, you mentioned, there's, there's, um, levels of, you know, people or communities in, in, in every city. You know, people that are really well off and then middle class. And then there's a, the less fortunate, you know, people that don't have as much as, you know, others that struggle a lot.
Yes.
How do you make sure that, um, you advocate for everybody that, you know, there isn't people that get left out? Because a lot of the times, you know, especially I feel in, in Colorado, uh, people are being, you know, the working class or, or people that, that are not at the bottom, but are in the middle that struggle as well, are kinda like not in, in the conversation as much as, as other people that business owners or people that are, 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 you know, really, um, in need.
In need.
How do you make sure that everybody feels, you know, served equally?
It's a four-letter word. It's love. You gotta love everybody. And, and I, and I prove that because I tell people, action speaks louder than words. I, I'm not about the person that's gonna sit up there and talk about it. I'm going to be about it. So I've been out there and I've went and I have talked to the less fortunate. And some of their stories will wow people. We have so many people that will judge people before they even communicate with them. And, and that's what a lot of people have said about me too. They, before they talked to me, they were like, oh my goodness, I would have never thought you were the person that you are. I'm just like, we grew a connection once they sit down and they got to communicate with me. But it's the same thing as far as the people out in the community. You have to go and communicate. I've been out there and I've talked to the less fortunate. I've been out there to help them. The middle-class people, people that I, they would be amazed at how many people actually have one foot out of the door of being homeless. What, what are mental issues? Oh my goodness, like you would be so amazed. People, people that you see dressed nicely, hair combed, the first thing they talk about is their mental issues. We have so many people that are struggling. They look nice, but they're living in a whole nother world. They're beating theirself up inside. They don't know how to take life from one day to the next. But if you don't communicate with these people, you don't know what they're going through. And I'm a living witness for that. The people that, the business owners, how some of them are really good off, they, they have everything that they need. But there's some of them that are, are struggling and they want help and they do have needs. But it's about you going and communicate with them because I've learned this campaign, this campaign has taught me a lot. Uh, every day, my grandmother, she told us, every day you'll learn something new. And that's a fact. Because as you go out there, you communicate with people and you get to know them and you get to know their struggles and you get to know that, hey, you're not as good off as you look. You know, it's about, you know, and I've been guilty of it too, judging a book by its cover. And that's what people do, but we can't do that. Especially when you're sitting in a seat on city council, you can't just assume. You can't just sit up there and think that everybody's pockets match your pockets. You gotta get out there and communicate with people and understand that the struggle is real. There are people out there with wants and needs and that's our job to see where people stand because you can look like this, but you can be beaten up inside. You can have so many mental illnesses. You can have depression going on. Suicide is real. I mean, when I sit up there and I talk to people and they say, I'm, I survived, I came through it. I, and I'm sitting up there looking at them like, wow. Wow, I wouldn't have ever thought that this was your story. So I see this as a, a insight. People trust me. They communicate with me. They talk to me. And I understand them. I don't think that I'm better than nobody else. That, that has not ever been my agenda. And, and me going out and talking to people, my heart, it really hurts for a lot of people. It, it, it's real out there. It's really real. The mental issues. I mean, when I say that, we have to really look at people from a whole different perspective. And we have to understand where people are coming from, regardless of where they live, how they live, what level of life they're living in. We have to come to an understanding that everybody's different. Everybody has a story. And it's up to us to make really good decisions. When I say really good decisions, it's decisions about sitting down and, and, and just crossing out what is not important, leveling up some things that are important. Because as I talk to a lot of people, cause a lot of people, uh, they tell me, oh, I just care about the north side and the east side. No, that's not true. I care about everybody. I was born and raised on the north side. I've lived there all my life. There's no doubt about that. Those are my neighbors. I hear their cry. I know their struggle. The east side is somewhere I've been in church at all my life. I went to school at Washington School. My parents, uh, my mom was a teacher at Washington School. My grandma was a secretary at Washington School. I know the east side. But you gotta also remember being born right here in this valley. I know that south side and I know that west side too. I grew up with a lot of people and I know I've been to their house as well as them coming to my house. I know people. And, and I'm not judging nobody because of anything, but I will look out for all people. And I say that with capital letters, A L L. Cause I'm a strong believer that it's not gonna take just one person. It takes a team. And we're gonna look out for all people.
Yeah. And, and I think that's, that's something that, um, a lot of people look for, you know, somebody that's gonna, you know, equally represent everybody.
That's right.
Um, especially, you know, because everybody, uh, uh, not, I mean, not everybody, but people wanna feel like they, they, they have compassion. But at the same time, um,
They don't show it.
Or no, or, or when it, when they see somebody that's, um, that's in a city council or, you know, in the capital or, or, you know, the state or the federal that, that's being compassionate and, and, and advocating for people that really need, um, they, they don't like it, you know? Like they kinda, they feel like they're leaving them out. But if you look at everybody else that's representing everybody else, there's less people who are representing those who are really in need.
Yes.
But at, but at the same time, they, it's hard to, to be somebody that's, um, equal where, you know, you, you, you show compassion for the really, the people that are really in need. But at the same time, you know, advocate for the middle class or for, for people that are, you know, well off, you know, looking for, um, ways to help them out in, 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 in a way. So I feel that that's something that everybody's looking for, but at the same time, um, they feel like you can't really show too much compassion for one group. Cause then.
Exactly. And, and I've been through that through this campaign season and it's not about showing compassion for one group. It's about looking at the underserved. It's about, let's take a ride around town and look at the south side and look at the west side and then go look at the, the north and the east side and the people on the east side have, they're concerned. Oh my goodness, they have reached out to me so much. There's no grocery stores over there. Talking about underserved, come on now. There, there's no bus stops. So they're just like, everything's limited. So they just wanna be treated equal as the other sides of town and I don't blame them. Because as a city council, it doesn't say, uh, south and west side council. It's a city council. So that means you need to go and, here goes my little school thing, never eat soggy waffles. You gotta look out for the north, the east, the south and the west. That's just the way it has to be. You can't say that you're looking out for one side of town and you're not looking out for the other. And just because I'm advocating a, a strong for something that I've seen all my life and something that I know, you can't knock me for that. You cannot knock me for that. And, you know, I've been a part, I'm on the, the board for the parks and the wrecks right now and that's been an interesting ride. I love it. The very, very, very informative. We, uh, you know, I have learned a lot through watching what's in the inside of what's going on with the new library. And then I'm on, I've been on the, um, committee with the Gomez Park on the east side. They just got approved for some money to help build that park for the children and the, the families over there. So it's exciting. I'm glad to see things grow in El Centro because I remember when it was just dirt.
Yeah.
There was nothing but dirt. And now we're growing. We're growing. So, and I went to the Buckland Park. I've been over there to their functions and we grew up in that park as well because I've had all kinds of friends and relatives that lived over there, the west side. I've been everywhere. So I will not stand for just one side of town, but I am looking out for some of the underserved because those are the people that are talking. Why don't our towns, our side of town look like the other side of town? Why do they have this and we don't have this? So those are the questions. So if you feel like you need to come talk to me, come talk to me because we can talk about the south and the west side too, but the north and the east side right now, they're furious. Those people are furious. They're like, why are we underserved and why are we overlooked? Those are questions I can't ask. I mean, I don't have answers to right now. But just give me some time. Just give me some time.
So, um, it, you know, once you win your, your position, um, wh- what are some of the things that you would, you know, be, you know, you mentioned, you know, parks and, and serving the, uh, the east and the, the north and the east side. What are some of the other things that you would like to, you know, focus or push when it comes to, you know, the city of El Centro?
I would like to see the level of communication open again. I keep thinking back, cause being born and raised in El Centro, that was my, that's been my life. So I know all of the ins and the outs and what we used to do and how things used to be and the, the communication and just the love of everybody on Main Street, just how we used to have our functions and we used to do things, have an ice cream social. We used to have different businesses that were open down there because sometimes if you don't lead these people to these businesses, they don't even know they exist. So it's gonna be up to us to open these doors for people. And if we can have different functions on Main Street and have different setups and, and different socializing, that is something that our community miss. That is something that we need to go back to. And that's something that we need to have because a lot of people, I've heard from so many people about Yuma, how they have on their main strip, how it's just beautiful and the public is always out there. Imperial, the same thing. They have that. So El Centro, we're no different. We just need to bring it back to life. And I think that the council, we can do that.
And I think, you know, the, 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 most of the work for, you know, the city of El Centro is already done when it comes to having, cause I, I, I talked to a lot of the people that are still business owners, not a lot, but a couple of people that are still business owners in downtown. And, you know, they're always open to doing events like this.
Yes.
You know, um, Ernie and Mesh, and, and Meshka Brewing Company that, or before it was called Strangers.
Yes.
Um, you know, they always have, e- e- even now they have events and, 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 and their business, you know, they open it up for, for small vendors to come in and sell their stuff or, or other people who are, who are selling, um, or, uh, cooks that sell food. They, you know, they, 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 they help the community, um, promote themselves, uh, sell their, their goods. So, you know, when it comes down to making sure that, that you have vendors, you have people that are gonna put up an event like this, you know, it, they don't need, you know, they, they don't need to put a lot of effort into it because they already have those people who are willing to, to do all that and promote and, and, and get people down there and and, and, you know, talking to them, sometimes I feel that the city isn't as, 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 um, open to, for, to them to do these kinds of events. And, and everybody says, oh, we need to make downtown, uh, you know, booming again. And yet, and yet, when you have these, these people, these, these businesses that are wanting to do that, you make it hard for them to, to, to do it. So I don't know, it's, it's, it's hard for, for people to understand, you know, why it's like that, why it's, you know, you're not, you know, making it super easy for them to, to, you know, put out, uh, uh, cause I remember one time they, they wanted to do like, um, um, put like little shops in, 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 on the sidewalks and stuff and the city wouldn't let them. So, you know, that's little things like that, that you would think the city would be more open to and they learn.
Right. That's right. And, you know, this is just something, cause when I say I've heard that a hundred and one times a week, this is something that the people stand strong for. They really want to bring Ma- uh, Main Street back to life. They really want to have the communication and the functioning amongst the families. And I, I really think that as a council, it's gonna be a time where people are gonna have to get out of self mode. You're gonna have to understand that when you're running a city, this is for the community. It's not about you. It's not about your wants. It's not about your needs. It's about what the community wants. Regardless if you like it or if you approve of it, how do you know it's not gonna work if we don't try it? You can't sit up here and say it's not gonna work or, oh, I don't think that that, that was back there. But this is something that the community wants. And when they compare theirselves to Yuma and compare, uh, our city to Imperial, that's like an ouch. Yeah, that's like an ouch. Like you really need to, you, you really need to have that communication and just open the doors for people. And this is something that the city wants and this is something that I want to bring to the table strongly. If we don't listen to nothing else from the communities, see how this is gonna work.
Yeah. And some, something that I ask, um, a lot of people who are running for city council is, say for some reason, you don't, you don't win, you know, are you gonna, cause a lot of people, they lose and then, you know, you don't see them, they, they, they go off into the sunset. But it's, you know, you're already somebody that is doing something for a community. You help other communities. So I really feel that that wouldn't change.
Oh, yeah. That doesn't change anything for me. That doesn't change anything at all. I'm gonna always be, uh, until the day I lose my last breath, I'm gonna be working to serve to other people because that's how I was raised. I was raised, we're not here for us. We're here to help other people. So, and this is even between my two years of running, uh, we spearheaded, uh, I was working with social justice. We spearheaded a health fair for the community. Uh, we partnered with Dr. Vog. It was amazing. It's about serving people. I haven't stopped and I won't stop. I'll keep going regardless of, you know, what the outcome is gonna be, I'm gonna still keep going.
Even with a bum leg.
That, that's me. I gotta keep pushing. I'm hoping to get released from this so I can get back out there how I want to because we have ten days left. Woo, I'm so excited. I'm ready.
So we're at, uh, forty-five minutes and that's, you know, kinda like the, the, the time period I'm, I'm, I'm giving the candidates. Any closing thoughts that, you know, anything I didn't ask you or anything that you would like to, you know, tell our listeners before we, we end this episode?
I know that a lot of people have voted already by mail. And a lot of people just look at the ballot and leave it on their counter. Don't do that. If you need help filling that ballot out, if you need help taking it somewhere to drop it off, call somebody. Reach out to your neighbor. There's a lot of people that I know that are willing to help people get their ballots in the proper way. If you're one of the people that go on November eighth, I appreciate that as well. But I'm asking for your vote. Every single last vote counts. And I'm just asking, please vote for Sonia Carter.
All right. Well, thank you so much for, you know, we've been, you know, rescheduling, you know.
We got it. We got it. We're here. We did this.
Last time it was because of the storm.
Yes. Yes.
But thank you for, for coming down here and, and, you know, sharing your stories, sharing, you know, your information on your campaign. Anywhere where people can follow your campaign, you know, social media.
Yes, I, I'm on Facebook, I'm on Instagram, I'm everywhere. So, and my, uh, email is votesonyacarter@gmail.com. So if you wanna reach out to me, you can reach out to me that way, but I'm everywhere. If you don't know how to get in touch with me, trust me, you can find me somewhere. And I'm willing to talk to you. I'm willing to communicate with you. I'm willing to hear what you need to say. And I thank you for having me today.
No, no, thank you for coming now. I really appreciate it. All right, guys. Well, thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you guys in the next one. Peace.